All right, I am going to call the Tuesday, December 15th, Common Council Meeting to Order. Elissa, will you please take the role?
Yes.
Here.
Wen.
Here.
Ritten.
Ritten.
Here, here.
Bart?
Here.
Holt House? Wagner?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Wetzel?
Here.
Kilt?
Here.
All right, very good. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of Canada. All right. So before we get going too much here, just a couple of reminders. If we're trying to, we've hardwired this laptop in so hopefully we don't have the same interruptions. If something goes haywire, flash your hands at me. If you're not speaking, please do your best to keep your computers muted or your phones muted. And then when you're making a motion, if you could please say your last name in the motion, that would be helpful for Elissa and I. Okay, so the first item we have is the minutes of the council meeting from December 1st. Are there any corrections, comments on any of, on those minutes? Oh, take a, all right, I'll try to remember. Well, reminder, the year-end meeting is on the 29th at 4:30. Elissa is reminding everyone. Um, all right, comments and suggestions from citizens present. The only person, is there anyone that would like to comment? I'm not sure who caller two is.
This is Jill Holt House. I could not get into the go-to meeting, so I apologize. I'm starting on telephone.
That is okay. All right. Seeing none, we do not have a public hearing this evening. The next item is committee reports. You all have the Finance Committee from December 7th and Public Safety and Welfare from November 18th. Does anyone have any comments or questions on any of those minutes? Yep, very good. Uh, we have no old business under Communications and Recommendations. We do have a library update. I'm not sure if HAG is on. Okay. Um, and then the next is employee recognition. We are recognizing Elizabeth Christian for five years. She's currently working with the Police Department and prior to that was with the library. So we thank Elizabeth for her years of service and will get that certificate to the Police Department. Um, I just mentioned about the year-end meeting, so with that, I would move, we'll move on to the COVID-19 update and discussion. Carol's on this evening, so I'm going to have her present. So Carol, just give me one second to pull up the PowerPoint. Okay, all yours.
Okay, okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to start the presentation with some details and some expectations with vaccine. One of the older persons could ask for more information. I wanted to just start the conversation with a graphic that's been shared. It actually came out of Australia with an infectious disease doctor, just helping you understand that not one mitigation measure, one prevention strategy is going to work into controlling the spread of a pandemic. And that it really is why we have multiple layers of prevention measures, starting with distancing and mask, hand hygiene. And you can see that the very last measure for preventing spread is vaccine. But using all of these together, we can help contain the spread and help improve the health of our community and hopefully return back to normal activities. Next slide. So on, I will, I didn't put this on the slide, but on Thursday, the FDA started to hear testimony around the emergency use authorization for the Pfizer vaccine. That was the first vaccine, pharmaceutical company that applied for emergency use authorization. They did meet Thursday and Friday and Saturday, and they did release that authorization. Then after that, the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, which is a national committee, has been in place for many years, did forward a recommendation for the vaccine to be used for individuals who are 16 years of age and older. Then, after that, our state disaster medical advisory committee, using the information that came from the federal government, both the FDA, the CDC, which CDC takes the recommendation from ACIP, but our state advisory committee then adopted those policies and those recommendations. Next slide. So both ACIP and the state advisory committee have been working on priority groups who should be vaccinated first. Priority Group 1A includes healthcare personnel and residents and staff of long-term health and care facilities. So the state of Wisconsin will be receiving 50,000 doses of vaccine this week. They, I believe they've not received half of that shipment to date. But the vaccine will be going to hubs. There are seven hubs in the state. And the reason why this vaccine will be distributed to hubs and then they're calling it a hub and spoke process of distribution is because the Pfizer vaccine must be maintained at super, sub-zero temperatures. So for vaccine safety, storage and handling, the vaccine will go to the seven pre-identified hubs, repackage securely, and then transport it out to spokes. And initially, all of the vaccine has just gone to hubs. So any vaccine that you see being administered around the state, it isn't being administered at one of the seven hubs. The first vaccines that have arrived in the state have gone to hospitals and they will be going out to medical clinics as well. FDA will be reviewing another vaccine this week from Moderna. The expectation is that review process will go similar to how Pfizer vaccine review process went. It'll be a few days of testimony. And then the expectation is that FDA will approve that. ACIP will come out with a similar recommendation. It might be exactly like what the recommendation was for Pfizer. And then we will, we hopefully should see shipments of Moderna vaccine coming in next week. And Moderna vaccine is not as sensitive to temperature. It can be stored at freezer temperature or for a shorter period in refrigerator temperature. So that vaccine will be distributed directly to clinics. Wisconsin also activated yesterday the Pharmaceutical Partnership, which is a federal program that the federal government developed a process working with large pharmacies, Walgreens and CBS, to provide vaccines to long-term care facilities, both their staff and residents. So we have been, we've had a pandemic plan here for many years. We've exercised it. We pulled it out for H1N1. We, we exercise it almost every year. We update it quite regularly and we have recently updated our plan with our community partners. Our exercise this year, because we have some new staff and working with some new community partners to help distribute vaccine, we, we did exercise our plan in November. We offered to dive through food clinic for school-aged children. Our plan has been designed to reflect both ACIP and the state advisory guidance on storage and handling and distribution. And I have completed the registration as a vaccinator and I'm awaiting to hear from the state health department. We continue to work with all healthcare providers on a comprehensive plan to identify priority groups that might not other be, otherwise be associated with an organization where they could receive the vaccine. Both the hospital and the health department are awaiting notification of vaccine arrival. And then once vaccine becomes widely available, we will have community vaccination clinics, but those clinics probably will not be until late spring or early summer. Then I will just, this is the regular presentation of going through our, our local numbers. We've had a total investigation number of 11,636. 9,157 are not a case. We've had 2,004 confirmed cases, 1,849 have recovered, and we have 155 active cases. We have 33 probable cases, 271 suspect cases. We have 171 open contacts. 4% of our positive cases have been hospitalized and we've had 25 deaths. The next slide is the presentation that we provide to the community every Monday and Friday, just showing our case count of active cases, total cases and those recovered. The next slide just breaks down our case count by age. You can, again, very similar to previous presentations, the most active age group that where we see most disease is the 20 to 29-year-olds. And then the next slide breaks it down even further by pediatric cases. Then we see most cases in this age group in the, oh, and we didn't add the, I wanted to add something to this, but next time, 14 to 17-year-olds. And then the next slide is our Wednesday presentation and we remain in phase one. And the next slide is just the definition for the metrics.
Um, I will just provide a quick update and then, mine's very brief, and then I'll open it up for any discussions or questions. Um, okay, so emergency order usage and funding category. First, on funding side, as you all know, the CARES funding period, reimbursement period and claiming period ended. We did submit around $4 million worth of claims. We received our allocation. We received a small bump from the Town of Watertown. And then just late today, we were notified that there was about $12 million statewide that was not used by municipalities. DOA reallocated that remaining $12 million to the additional expenses that were in the system. With that reallocation, we received just over $41,000 more dollars for our CARES funding allocation. I pseudo-used the emergency order, emergency declaration this past week. I say pseudo because it was approved at Finance, just wasn't approved by Council. We locked into fuel prices. There was concern through our fuel vendors and through our street superintendent and leadership that we were going to start to see fuel prices rise with the accessibility of the vaccine. So we did use that emergency declaration to lock into fuel prices for the coming year now versus waiting. As an update, our buildings remain closed. We are, though, open Monday, Wednesday and Friday for tax payments in the clerk's office, so we are open for that. We've, we've shared that. Our staffing situation continues to improve, which gives me a lot more comfort. We will be discussing at Finance Committee next week, an extension of the FFCRA benefits, mainly the 80 hours that people get if they're quarantined or isolated. It does not appear as though the federal government will be passing a extension to that, or I'm not sure if they'll be doing anything before the end of the year. So just in preparation for that, we will be proposing one for the, the committee to consider. It does have an out written in it. So what that means is if the feds were to pass something, ours would no longer be relevant. So this is really just ensuring we have some protections there for 2021. Carol spoke a lot to the vaccine planning that's been happening. We, we have remained committed to offering a variety of rec programming and services. I, I try to talk about those and we try to advertise those quite profusely. So we have expanded the recreational programmings for, for families, for individuals, outdoor, indoor, sports that are traditionally outdoor. We've moved to kind of an indoor space that's not really indoor because there's no heat, but we're, we're trying to be creative, so. And then I did not receive, aside from the discussion about the emergency declaration that we had at Finance Committee, I did not receive any additional feedback to incorporate into that version. So those are my updates. What questions do you all have for Carol or I, or comments? Okay. All right, seeing none, we shall move on. Thank you, Carol. Actually, you're staying, sticking around tonight, right? Okay. Um, we have no new business. The next is the accounts payable.
Wetzel, blue, pay all accounts.
Thank you. Motion by Wetzel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on those? Elissa?
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kilt?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Wen?
Aye.
Ritten?
Upstate.
Bart?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
All right. Next is reports, reports and miscellaneous business. We have the Airport Commission from November 11th, the Cable TV Regulatory Board of November 10th, the Cash and Investment Summary from November 30th, Historic Preservation and Downtown Design Commission from November 18th, the Library Board of Trustees from October 8th and 29th, Licensing Board from December 2nd, Main Street Program from November 17th, Park Recreation and Forestry from November 9th, the Payroll Sumories of November 18th to December 1st, the Reserve Balances from November 30th, the Senior Center Advisory Board from October 21st, and the Transit Commission from November 24th. Any comments, questions on any of those reports and minutes? All right. Uh, licenses, we have just one this evening. It's an agent change application for Aldi's Incorporated at 1520 South Church. This is for Megan Turnas. Is there a motion?
I make a motion for agent change.
Thank you. A motion by Holt House. Second by Ritten.
Second.
All right, very good. Any questions on this one?
Ritten?
Uh, Ritten.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? All right, very good. Let's go to ordinances then. The first is ordinance 20-30. This is to adopt a Plan Unit Development Precise Implementation Plan under Section 550-152. This is for 722 O'Connell Street. This is here from me and the Plan Commission on the second reading. Mr. Ritten?
Can I start discussion without making a motion?
Yes. Right, I'm waiting for, yes, Rose is shaking her head. Okay, yes.
Okay, great. I just want to say that I'm kind of disappointed in, in the lack of reciprocity with the M. I've asked Attorney Rose how many times she reached out to these folks in regards to working up a lease with a defined end date. And so far since August 31st, she's reached out twice by email with zero response. So the, the whole intent, when this whole process started back in November of 2019, was to give them a year to keep using the space and, in my understanding, to find a new space to, to move. And so we passed a resolution, but in order for that resolution to take, we had to go through this Plan Unit Development process, which we didn't know at the time. So, so a lot of work's been done. And, and frankly, I think it's been a lot of difficult work on the part of the zoning administrator, Jacob Scott, and Attorney Rose, because it, it seems like, from what I've heard, it's, they're just not really responsive. And, and my concern is if we go ahead and pass this, the second reading of this ordinance, we're still not going to hear anything about signing a lease and defining an end date, because this is a city space and we want to use our space for many reasons, which have been hashed out before. So, um, I'd like to hear other people's take on this and then I, I may, may make a motion later to perhaps table this for at least a month and, and see if M. and Rose can get a lease agreement kind of hammered out with a defined end date.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or any questions? For anybody from the city team?
This is Pash. I'm trying to recall the, the previous discussion on this matter, but so, uh, what we're saying is that they're, they're just not responding?
Maybe I'll ask, I, I think at this point, Rose has probably had, Rose and Jacob have had the most communication, so I'll go to Rose first. And if Jacob, if you have anything, please chime in.
I provided, I emailed everybody that summary. I thought it would be better if Jacob and I both gave a summary of our communication, because frankly, Jacob for the most part has done a ton of late work on the zoning issue and he's, I mean, he's had the most contact with, and that's when that contact has been made. So I wanted to just provide that timeline and not just include my contact, because if nobody responds to me about a lease, that's, you know, not as pressing as if, you know, Jacob moving forward with the whole ordinance change and the planning and development. I mean, this took a lot of work for, on his end of things. I wouldn't say, I, I want to be fair. I don't want to characterize them as unresponsive. Not the most timely. I would say there's, there's not a, there's not a sense of emergency here. And not that necessarily it's a dire emergency, but there's just not a real, I would call it motivation, to really change the status quo, because the status quo is pretty nice. They're using the space for free. They don't have, have insurance. They don't have to, there's no sort of rules. There's no, you know, so I, I mean, that, that I think is, is a better characterization. And I would defer to Mr. Mas if he has anything to add on that topic.
I would concur with your statement. City attorney, send Silva.
I'm just reading the summary right now. Did everyone that came through sometime between six and seven? So there's a summary in there. I don't know if that summary helps answer your question, Mr. Pash?
Yeah, I did read it. I think just for the benefit of this forum, I wanted to just, I have some direct narrative on that, because I, I think it speaks to our, our ability to move forward and do so effectively. Both sides have to, there has to be a willingness. And not, not just a loose or a vague willingness, but a commitment to try to come to a resolution. I think it's clearly understood that there, what is cannot continue to be what will. And I, and I trust all parties involved know that, so. That's where I'm at is, you know, the, the semantics have to stop and we just have to move forward and come to a mutually beneficial agreement. Which should be this lease, but so to Alderman, Ritten's suggestion, I, I too would, would be in favor of tabling it if needed, so we can start grinding this out, get to a place we need to be.
Rose, I do have a question for you. At what point in time does a lease become null and void due to lack of response?
So have you asked that question? No. All right. Self-storage units are governed by Statute 705.90. And actually, a self-storage unit, like for, that's what this is on, this is what the PUD is going to zone this at now, is a self-storage unit essentially within this larger building. So, um, a written lease is required per law. Otherwise, you don't, you, you don't have, you don't have a right to that, that area. And this is kind of comes back to, I don't know if anybody of his, I'm not trying to, the storage wars, you know how those kind of, those, that show how like they take over the, the unit? That's essentially how Wisconsin law is written as well. So like personal storage units, if you don't pay your rent for two months, then the owner can take over the unit and take all the things inside of it and sell it. I'm not saying we do that, okay, but that's, that's an example of how that, that part of the statute is written. So a written lease is required. Otherwise, there is no personal storage. Is that, is that sufficient? Okay.
So I, I don't know if it's obvious, but there is no lease right now and there never has been. So there's not one to revoke at this point because of a lack of response. We don't have one. We never have, as far as we can tell.
Okay, so, so my, so my second question to that would be then, if, if this were to pass, that lease would come into play and then they'd have X amount of time to respond? And failure to respond at that point would be necessarily called eviction, because they don't have the proper lease in place, meaning that they shouldn't be there? With, with this passing?
Yes, I, I, yes, I, I think I can, yeah, agree to that. Tabling it allows, allows it to maintain, to be, tabling it allows the lease to become still an option. If you don't table it and we re, we rezone, then essentially there will be, there'll be, I mean, within a reasonable amount of time, there'll be violation. Is, is my interpretation.
Any, Mr. Ritten?
This is Ritten again. So based on what I just heard, maybe tabling it isn't the best option in my mind. I, I'd like a lease to get in place and so maybe if we table it or just kind of delaying it is kind of what I'm hearing. So if we, if we pass this, then, then it's a storage unit. Now the clock starts ticking. Is that a fair assumption?
It does. It's a little bit more immediate clock, but yes, it does start ticking if, if you have to today. I guess I, I wasn't sure where this discussion was going. I thought you were being kind, older person, and, and not kind, but just kind to allow them the opportunity to be responsive, because in, in theory, for, for my, for my review of 704.90, I think there needs to be a lease in place almost immediately. Otherwise, they will be in violation. And I don't, nobody wants to use the E-word, you know, especially in regards to this whole scenario. I, I want it to be amicable and I want it to, to work, to work out and, I guess. But I, I can't, I can't negotiate with somebody who is not responsive to, to myself, or, well, I think they're responsive to Mr. Pash, but at least not to me.
Ritten, again, my intention was to get their attention, to get a lease in place as soon as possible, so. as soon as possible. So, I think what I'm hearing is I don't want to table this. What's everyone else thinking?
Mr. Pash?
I'll just speak to my reasoning. So, that's the exact why I was in favor of tabling it, because I really do want to try to deploy as much diplomacy. I know we've been very patient. And I kind of loosely, very loosely, kind of correlate this to like eminent domain, where it's just such a last resort, to go down the road of strong-arming them, you know. Well, I don't disagree with that inevitability if you get there. I just really want to try to, try to use reasonable diplomacy, that, you know, they have to clearly understand that this is it. You know, we've come to an impasse here. We have to find a resolution. But, so that was my reasoning for the tabling, is I do agree. My impression was once we make this step, then the clock accelerates, and the inevitability for conflict is very, very present. And I really would like to avoid that. But maybe it's not. I don't know.
Any other comments or questions or motions?
I do have a clarification question.
Sure.
Clarification question for Rose.
Go ahead, Mr. Schmidt.
Which timeline, Rose, gives, which option gives us the longer timeline, the tabling it or the passing it?
Tabling it gives them more time, because it maintains the status quo for over much longer, until you table it through.
Okay.
I don't, Rose, I'm going to ask this question, and then, I think for discussion purposes, to help people maybe decide which path to take. Do you, do you have the intention of negotiating a year-long lease? Or is it, I believe the intention of the body was a year from the date of passage of the resolution. And that was last July, that was two Julys ago, right? So, what, that was last July? No, no. It was a July before this council was here. So, it'd been July of 19. This council didn't pass that resolution.
The resolution was passed November of 2019.
Of 19. Oh, November. So, maybe, I have July in my head for some reason. So, we're past that year. So, I guess that would help, maybe help people understand, what is the duration that you are intending to negotiate?
Can I, I just want to have one last question. Rose, in, within our latitude to present an ultimatum, and I don't know if this is a question I could ask in this forum, but to where I just want to make sure that they have a very clear and understood ultimatum, that this is it. We come to a lease agreement for, you know, this is the next thing that happens, which is not going to potentially end well. I can't make it go either, but I just want, I'm just not completely convinced that they fully understand, and they should, and without a doubt they should. They've had ample time to clearly understand the message from the city. But, I don't know. It just, it just, it just amazes me that they haven't responded in light of that, and just being certain that they have a very, very good understanding of what the implications are for not cooperating.
I don't want to speak to what they know in their mind, but I, I mean, me personally have been involved in many hours of conversation with them, with staff, and also in many, many emails, in which we indicated that a lease is going to be necessary. You're going to have to do this. So, I, again, I don't know. I mean, I haven't sent a, I haven't sent a nasty, like, pre-eviction letter or anything like that, and I didn't think I had the authority to do that at this point.
Mr. Ritten?
Another, another option. Let's just say for argument's sake, this doesn't pass, either now or if we table it for a month and it doesn't pass then, then what happens?
If the planning of development doesn't pass?
Oh, the PIP.
Then they are in, the use is in violation of our zoning code. And we would, well, Jacob, why not, sorry, go ahead. This is your show.
So, previously I had sent the mayor a notice of violation, because we were not in compliance with our zoning code. So, if we do not pass the planning of development, I would then issue another notice of violation to the mayor as the, as chapter 14, she is, chapter 114, she is the property manager for the city. At that time, then, under chapter 550, I can remediate the situation through either just having the street department go in and remove everything and throw it into a dumpster, or I can find, well, I don't know how I'd find the city, but I can, I can remove all the materials inside the building. It's not, it's not a clean scenario if you go that route.
The word Jacob's looking for is abatement.
Yeah, abatement, yes. Thank you, Rose.
Any other questions or comments from anybody?
This is Alderman Wagner. So, just to clarify, so if we go the route of passing this, essentially they have to write a lease almost immediately or sign it, or they'll be in violation. Or, we go the other route of Jacob not, and then it doesn't pass, and then they basically get abated after a certain point in time.
And I would add a third option, which has been presented, which is tabling it till a date certain, potentially giving them a month, and then passing or failing either one of the options you just described as well. Those are the third, the three that I've heard.
Okay.
I mean, this has been going on for a year and a half. And I'm not debating, I'm sharing facts. This has been going on for a year and a half. This has been a topic heavily tracked and attended by the group, I would say, until the last few months, until we got really to this juncture. And then, I haven't had any interaction with the group about this topic. So...
This is Alderman Ritten again. Right now, I'd like to make the motion to table this item to, I think it's going to be January 19th. Is it going to be the second meeting next month?
I'll take a look. Yes.
All right. I'll make a motion to table this agenda topic to January 19th.
Okay.
At that time, I'd like to give it a yes or a no, based on feedback that Rose has received.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Alderman Schmidt, I would second that.
Okay. Second by Schmidt. Is there any discussion just on the tabling?
I would just comment that I support the tabling with a clear understanding that this will be resolved before that, that next discussion, where I'll be fully prepared to act on the, on the PUD.
This is Alderman Wagner. I would, can we get an update if there's a response prior to meeting? Or do we have to wait until the meeting to know if they've responded?
Oh, I think we can set a reminder just to, and I'm sorry, Rose, but I think we can set a reminder for, you know, the week before the meeting, to email, no one can reply all. Well, can we? It's teetering.
If you noted, I blank copied all of you. So, I'll just do the same.
Okay. Okay. We'll make a reminder to do that. I want to just clarify the request for tabling. When, when this does come back for consideration, potentially, if the tabling passes, are you looking at that point in time for the city attorney to have a negotiated lease to bring in hand to that same meeting? Are you looking for, I'm seeing Mr. Pash shake his head yes. Is that the desire then of this? I just want the direction to the attorney, to be clear. I'm seeing Alderman, okay. I'm seeing people shaking, okay. I'm seeing a lot of yeses, Rose. Okay, Rose, go ahead.
Thanks. I'm sorry. I'm not trying to be too clear. The resolution says I have to send it to Public Works first, and then council. So, there's just not, well, there would be time, but that would be cutting it really close.
So, maybe we can bring the update then, that a lease is negotiated and is going to Public Works. I think that's, I'm guessing, that that's the ask here, is that if this shows up on the 19th of January, then we would expect Public Works to have something on the 8th. Is that, am I understanding you all correctly then? I'm seeing a lot of head shaking yes. So, that, that would be the goal, Rose, is, oh, wait, I'm on the wrong month. Hold on. If the meeting is on the 19th, we would expect something by January 12th to go to Public Works. Someone, I didn't mean to cut someone off. I'm not sure who that was. Okay. So, we have a motion to table until January 19th, with the expectation that a negotiated lease would be presented to the Public Works Committee November, January 12th, or at the meeting right before that, if it's a different date. Am I capturing that correctly? Okay. Any other comments on that? Alderman Schmidt, did you have something?
No. At very least, I don't know if expecting a lease to be in negotiation or completed by that point is realistic with two major holidays. But at very least, there needs to be a two-way communication current and started, so that this long delays cease.
So, that's Alder, I just want, that's a little bit different than what I was seeing people shake their heads to, and I want Rose to have very clear guidance on this one.
Yeah. I guess I'll interject, and I appreciate that notion, but I think there's been ample time. I think this is the absolute, this is us trying to, trying to appease the situation one last time. But, well, I do appreciate the holidays. From my position, it's got to be done. Business is still being conducted between now and mid-January, and this should be no different. It's just enough is enough. We got to, we got to move forward on this. And at least, at least negotiation of this nature should not be that, should not be that involved. It's just a matter of committing a few hours to getting it done.
I would, would note, though, it's not, you aren't dealing with a nonprofit, and nonprofits are structured a lot differently than city government statutorily, and who can sign what does change based on membership, and who is part of the charter and who has that authority to sign off on it. So, yes, it is a little bit more complicated than what we would think should be, but yes, it has gone on a significant amount of time, and we do need to wrap this up sooner rather than later at this point.
Rose, do you feel like you have the information that you need for the lease? Has that already been prescribed to you? I know we've talked about it.
Public Works has already directed me on the specifics on that.
Okay.
And just so we're clear, was there, was there a motion to table the ordinance?
There was. Yes. And now we're discussing the contents of the tabling. There was a motion to table by Ritten and a second by Schmidt.
Okay. Sorry, I lost track of that. Table the ordinance. Okay.
Yep. And we're limiting discussion just to the context of tabling. I'm trying my best to be very Robert Rules appropriate here. Does anyone have anything else on the tabling or the components thereof? Mr. Pash?
Mayor, if I just may, then, really, I mean, ultimately, when we come back to meet at that, after this tabling, it'll ultimately just be a determination at that time, then based on the progress between now and then. Is that, is that correct? I mean, we'll just present the PUD again, and if, I mean, if there is no implemented lease, then it'll ultimately still be the determination of the council, where I would go forward?
Yeah. I mean, in my, in my kind of off-the-cuff determination, at the next, at the meeting of January 19th, this ordinance would appear the exact same way as you see it tonight. We could have, you'll have an update from the city attorney. You'll have had Public Works the week before to know the status of the lease, and you could vote up or down on this item the same way you, you could tonight. I believe that would work fine, and I don't see anyone shaking their head no at me, so.
Just in the event, you know, if all it has accomplished is a 10-minute phone call and no responsiveness and things of that nature, much of the same as historical, then, right. So, I'd be covered. So, okay. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. Any other discussion on this one? Mr. Barts? Or were you just turning your microphone on? Okay. Just getting ready to vote. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to table ordinance 20-30 until the meeting of January 19th, with the desire that a lease will be presented to the Public Works Commission prior to that meeting. I believe I've captured that correctly. Alyssa, why don't we take the roll on that one?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Oldhouse?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
Cash?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
All right. And then we're fine leaving that as tabled, so then we'll move on to ordinance 20-31. This is to repeal Watertown Municipal Code, section 220-14 through 220-19, Article 2, Outside Sales of Chapter 220, Alcohol Beverages and Other Beverages. This is here from me and the Licensing Board on its first reading.
This is Barts. I move to approve that.
Thank you. Motion by Barts.
I'll second Went.
Thank you. Seconded by Went. Does anyone have any questions on this one? All right. Alyssa?
Aye.
Oldhouse?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Upstate.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
Cash?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Ritten?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Next is ordinance 20-32. This is to amend chapter, excuse me, to amend the Watertown Municipal Code, Chapter 220-9F, Regulation of Licensed Premises and Licensees of Chapter 220, Alcohol Beverages and Other Beverages. This is also here from me and the Licensing Board on its first reading.
Went, motion to approve 20-32.
Thank you. Motion by Went.
Second by Barts.
Any questions on this one? Went?
Aye.
Ritten?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Oldhouse?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Upstate.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
Cash?
Aye.
All right. Next is ordinance 20-33. This is to amend chap, excuse me, to amend Section 410-32D, Civil Emergencies of Chapter 410, Peace and Good Order, Article 5, Government and Law Enforcement of the City of Watertown General Ordinances. This is here from Alderman Schmidt and Public Safety and Welfare on its first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion by Schmidt.
Went, second.
Seconded by Went. I saw you, Mr. Wetzel. I'll get you next time. Any comments or questions on this one? Mr. Ritten?
Have a good history on this one?
Mr. Schmidt, could you provide a little bit of background on this one?
Yes. So, this is essentially, Rose has a memorandum on this one, and I don't know if made the packets. This essentially lines us up with the update to state law that prohibits municipalities from having these kind of ordinances in place. This is just bringing us more in compliance with state on this one. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Alyssa? Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
Cash?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Ritten?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Oldhouse?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Let's go to resolutions. The first is Exhibit 9128. This is a resolution recognizing the retirement of Scott Theater from the Street Department. This is here from me.
I'll make a motion to approve, Schmidt.
Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Wetzel. I'll just say, Scott, Scott Theater has been just a tremendous employee to this community. Growing up here, I didn't know Scott was Scott, but I recognized- Growing up here, I didn't know Scott was Scott, but I recognized Scott from being a child, living in this city, and now having the opportunity to work with him. Um, this is a, a well-deserved retirement on a really incredible amount of time being devoted to our community. So I'm excited for him and thankful for all he's given, given to our community. Um, I don't think Mr. Theater's on, so I'll spare us reading the resolution. And I, I will take a voice vote on this one. Any, any other comments? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? All right. Next is Exhibit 9129. This is a resolution to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Local 877 of the International Association of Firefighters. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
Written, move to approve Exhibit 9129.
Thank you. Motion by...
Schmid, second.
Motion by Written, seconded by Schmid. Does anyone have any questions on this or comments? Alyssa.
Written?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next then is Exhibit 9130. This is the resolution to approve the collective bargaining agreement with the Labor Association of Wisconsin for the police officers. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
Written, move to approve Exhibit 9130?
Thank you.
Schmidt, second.
Thank you. Motion by Written, seconded by Schmid. Any questions or comments on this one? All right, Alyssa.
Written?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next is Exhibit 9131. This is a resolution to adopt the Dodge County All Hazards Mitigation Plan. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
Mr. Pash, I'll move to approve Exhibit 9131.
Thank you. Motion by Pash.
Holt House, I'll second.
Seconded by Holt House. Any questions on this one? Alyssa, are you fine with a voice vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, very good. Next is Exhibit 9132. This is a resolution to enter into the Watertown Humane Society 2021 Service Agreement. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
Mr. Pash, I'll move to approve Exhibit 9132.
Motion by Pash, second by...
Wagner.
Seconded by Wagner. That was funny. Any questions or comments? You even got the direction right. That's pretty cool. Uh, I assume we need a roll on this one. Alyssa.
Pash?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Written?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
All right. Um, it looks like we're gonna have a lot of, a lot of roll calls with these resolutions. So next is Exhibit 9133. This is a resolution to enter into the 2021 Tours and Promotion Service Agreement with the Watertown Chamber of Commerce. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
Mrs. Wagner, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Motion by Wagner.
Motion made, I'll second.
Ooh. Seconded by, was that Schmid?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion by Wagner, seconded by Schmid. Any questions? Comments? Alyssa.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Written?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
All right. Next is Exhibit 9134. This is a resolution to enter into contract with Insight FS for the purchase of unleaded and diesel fuel. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
Wetzel, 9134.
Thank you. Motion by Wetzel.
Schmid, second.
Seconded by Schmid. Questions or comments? I kind of alluded to this one earlier. Mr. Written?
Yeah, I thought you already bought this, so do we still have to approve it?
We signed, and I, we said we, it's better if we bring it after the fact. So we, we already signed for the pricing last week. But yes. Our auditors like to see resolutions for purchases. All right. Anyone else on this one? Alyssa.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Written?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
All right. Next is Exhibit 9135. This is a resolution to authorize a memorandum of understanding with Jefferson County for the 2021 Clean Sweep Event. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
Schmidt, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion by Schmid. Seconded by Went.
Holt House, I'll second.
We have a motion by Schmid, a seconded by Went. Any comments or questions on this one? Alyssa.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Written?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
All right. Next is Exhibit 9136. This is a resolution to approve the 2021 Pay Table and Rates. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
Written, move to approve Exhibit 9136.
Thank you.
Wetzel, second.
Motion by Written, a seconded by Wetzel. Any comments or questions on this one? Alyssa.
Written?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
All right. Next is Exhibit 9137. This is a resolution to authorize write-offs of uncollectible delinquent personal property taxes. This is here from me and the Finance Committee. Thank you.
Written, move to approve 9137.
Motion by Written?
Schmidt, I'll second.
Thank you. The seconded by Schmid. Any comments or questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
Went? So do we take over that property then? Does the city take over the property if there's unpaid taxes?
Alyssa?
This is business personal property, not real estate. So this is usually contents of a building owned by a business. And no, we don't take possession. We attempt to do the charge-back process through, um, that's allowed by state law, where we charge back the other taxing jurisdictions for their portion of the unpaid tax bill. So the city isn't losing the whole amount. But most of the businesses that we end up raking off are no longer in operation or most not all.
Okay. Any other questions? Alyssa.
Written?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
All right, very good. Next then is Exhibit 9138. This is a resolution to approve change order number three, the final for 2020, for crack sealing and seal coating contract with Scott Construction to a final price of $228,715.44. This is here from Alderman Pash and Public Works.
Mr. Pash, I'll move to approve Exhibit 9138.
Thank you. Motion by...
I'll second.
We have a motion by Pash and a seconded by Barts. Anybody have questions or comments on this one? All right, Alyssa.
Pash?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Written?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
All right. Next is Exhibit 9139. This is a resolution to approve change order number seven. This is the final one for 2020 for the Batumina Surfacing Contract with Wolf Paving to a final contract price of $578,690.37. This is again here from Alderman Pash and Public Works.
Mr. Pash, I'll move to approve Exhibit 9139.
Thank you. Second...
Wetzel?
Seconded by Wetzel. Motion by Pash, seconded by Wetzel. Any comments or questions on this one? Alyssa.
Pash?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Written?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
All right. Next is Exhibit 9140. This is a resolution to sell equipment on the Wisconsin Surplus Auction Site. This is here from Alderman Pash and Public Works.
Mr. Pash, I'll move to approve Exhibit 9140.
Thank you. Motion by Pash.
I'll second.
Seconded by Wagner. Comments or questions? You want a roll on this one, Alyssa? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? All right, very good. Next is Exhibit 9141. This is a resolution for the Wastewater Department to purchase a 2021 Ford F-550 chassis and equipment box installation. This is here from Alderman Pash and Public Works.
Mr. Pash, I'll move to approve Exhibit 9140.
Thank you. Motion by Pash. Second...
Second.
Seconded by Wetzel. Questions or comments? Alyssa.
Pash?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Written?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
All right, very good. Next is Exhibit 9142. This is a resolution for extension of the Declaration, Declaration of the State of Emergency. This is here from me, and we did take this to finance as well, it's just... I think it's on the resolution that came after. Is there a motion?
Written, I'll move to approve Exhibit 9142.
Motion by Written?
Pash, I'll second.
Seconded by Pash. Questions or comments?
I have one, Mayor.
Sure. Mr. Schmid?
Though I appreciate the convenience this offers for a six-month extension, I can't see the justification for it. Um, we come back this regularly, and my position's rather clear in these things.
We come back to this regularly and my position is rather clear in these things. Eventually, they're going to have to stop. And by continuing to kick the can down the road as we have been, it's not helping our cause to not continually to extend emergency powers.
Okay. I did bring this to the Finance Committee with just the standard two-month. I'm wondering if a member of the Finance Committee may want to share why it was adjusted to four? Or six? I guess four. Five.
This is-
Sure.
Just as easily, we can bring this up and end it before it expires if needed. Yeah, it's a convenience factor, but the mayor, as he's demonstrated, uses this monthly, if not almost weekly, for purchasing power and whatever else he needs. And we've gone over this before, so I don't mind kicking this out for six months, wherever it says. Like I said, we can always end it earlier if we need to, but I really don't see the need to do that yet with everything we've heard about infection rates and the vaccine rollout and we'll get it late spring. I mean, that's just kind of where this is ending, I think.
Thank you. Mr. Pash?
I just had to compliment all the person written's comments too. I think the discussion and where my mind is, after hearing Carol expand on the vaccination, you know, plan here, we're in a status quo. I mean, we're going to continue the way we are until, you know, this impacts change. And from all timelines that I've heard nationally, statewide, and locally, that's going to be late winter, spring, early summer, which is consistent with this extension. So for me, it's just motivated out of the realistic timelines of what events are going to occur to impactfully change where we're at with the pandemic. And at minimum, this timeline, I think, falls within those parameters, which was really the motivation for this timeline.
Alderperson Kelps, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, go for it.
I am opposed to this. Definitely going into May is wrong. We have a possible new members of council coming in in April, and we shouldn't be making these decisions for them. And the last, and you just said that you bought fuel with this. Fuel has nothing to do with COVID-19. And I think you might be using it, but I don't think it's justified using it for COVID-related stuff because you're not. Sometimes you are, but nothing seems to be that drastic that it usually takes place now. And therefore, I'm opposed.
I can share just not to, just facts. I did, I hesitated to use the emergency declaration on an IT purchase, and the price went up because I didn't pull the trigger on a, on a, an IT item that we needed. So when we used it for the fuel, it was because the market was, the people who evaluate the market were telling our Street Department that because of the vaccine coming out and the propensity for people to travel more, which has been, you know, widely shared, that travel reservations have, I think, blown up. I heard something like 400% increase. That because people will start to move more, fuel will go up. So that, just for, I guess for a bit of factual information on why I thought this emergency declaration suited us well for the purchase of fuel, it was to lock in the lowest price we could get before the market shot up. Are there any other questions or comments?
I have another one, Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt, I think Mr. Wetzel, sorry, I know you can't see him. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Schmidt.
Go ahead, Bob. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt.
All right. So I agree with some of the things said, though I will disagree to a point, especially with Alderman Pash citing vaccine-related anything in regards to these emergency orders. Those are giant maybes and a lot of hyperbole and no definitive information when it comes to vaccines. Specifically in regards to when we're going to get it, how effective they're going to be. Yes, I've seen the studies for Pfizer and the several other companies, both domestically and internationally, that are creating vaccines. But more specifically from a local level, we need to be very, very cautious on extending these things because perpetually, the appearance is going to increase that we, as a governing body, do not want to relinquish power in a state of affairs as we're in. And that's what we need to caution, and we need to either not extend this or definitely not as long as it's proposed.
Mr. Wetzel.
Batman, this first came up whenever it was, I think we were going to go for six months, and I said, let's go for two. Since that time, I think, Emily, you've demonstrated a good stewardship of that emergency declaration, in my opinion. If I was saying in this position in New York or California, I'd be saying, no, we're going to stop it right now. I think in our instance here in Watertown, I think it's been used wisely and and well. And as I said, the vaccine is supposed to be in in May, late, late spring, early summer. I am one that would lean more with Alderman, Alderperson Schmidt on that, on that. But I am okay with extending this for another five and a half months, whatever.
Mr. Pash, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, forgive me for creating a confusion. I don't mean to tie a direct parallel to the vaccination timeline and this, this order as though it's a certainty. I just, I might, I think the thought was, based on all the possible variables that are going to change this outcome, really, I mean, the vaccine is the only thing, the only action plan in place right now that's going to, based on all evidence and communication being given to us, you know, this is a turning point in this pandemic. So I didn't mean to to over speculate or, you know, it's far beyond my depth of knowledge, understanding in terms of medical capacity. I just feel like, and really to Alderman Wetzel's point, I look back at historical behavior, and we've been in this now for almost a year, and there's no evidence of mishandling or misappropriation of this authority and anything that would justify not having continued confidence and leaderships, being able to manage this for whatever duration. But in this case, I think this is appropriate timeline. So yeah, I just want to clarify that.
Mr. Britton?
Next time I look at those sentiments, I do think May 31st is a good timeline, and this was actually brought up in finance about whether to stop it before or after the April election. And the point was brought up that this current council, this group, us right now, has been dealing with this for the last nine months, and we kind of know why this is in place and what we're using it for. And it would, I think, become an extra burden on any crop of new alders elected in April that don't have that history. So I think having it in place for at least the first month or two after the new council is seated, then they'll be up to speed, and then they can make the educated choices that we're making now.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yes. I have one.
Mr. Schmidt?
You probably. Alderman Britton, respectfully, to assume that if any of us who are up reelection in the odd districts are replaced, and those replacements aren't up to speed, would assume that they are not paying attention to current events and what we've been doing as a council. To be fair, it's probably a valid point for some, to some degree, but not to complete, to a complete degree. I am with Alderman Kelps on this one. Extending it past the election is doing a disservice to the next governing body by making decisions for them when they are grown adults, have established themselves to be mature, responsible citizens of this community, and can make those decisions upon their own selves or whoever that governing body is. So I acknowledge Alderman Kelps' position that pushing it past the election is unwise on our half.
Mr. Pash, did you have one other item?
Just a quick question. I think it was mentioned earlier, but I just want to clarify, in the event, by the grace of God, we get out of this sooner, and by April, we're talking about pulling back to phase good. Phase whatever the best is. We can, I mean, this declaration can be canceled at any time.
Yes. I mean, if, you know, yes, is a short answer to your question. And even if we aren't in phase good, if come April, there's a new, a new council, you know, part of the council's new, and they aren't comfortable with this going till May 31st, they can bring that action as well.
I don't feel like, yeah, so to that point, I don't feel like we're relinquishing authority or ability to make determinations as the situation, it's been, that's been very fluid changes. This just puts it out enough that, you know, we may not be having this conversation again so quick, which I think is okay.
And if there's any, I'll just share one more kind of factual component to the discussion. If there's anything that would help, if I'm not providing enough information during the updates of any utilization of this, please email me or call me. I'm happy to add more information into that update. Any other questions or comments? All right, Alyssa.
Britton?
Aye.
Bartz?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
No.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
No.
Pash?
Aye.
Wendt?
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you. Our next and our last then for this evening is Exhibit 9143. This is a resolution to enter into contract with the Department of Natural Resources for the Transient Non-Community Well Program. This is here from me.
I'll move for 9143.
Motion by Wetzel. Seconded by Wendt. This is something that we've done for many, many years. Are there questions? Go ahead, Mr. Wetzel.
What is this?
Sure.
What is this?
Carol, could, I'll give you a second to pop back on here. So Carol, could you just describe a bit what the, what this program is about?
Yeah, so the the contract is for the non-community wells. So that means like a restaurant out in the county that has a private well. Any business that serves the public, but they have a private well, their water needs to be tested annually, and then every five years, the well, the survey or an inspection.
Helpful?
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Alyssa, do you want a roll call since it's committing staff? No? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? All right. Our next item then is comments and suggestions from citizens present. I don't see anyone on the line. Before I look for a motion to adjourn, just a reminder, December 29th, 4:30, is that correct, Alyssa?
4:30 or 5:00, whatever works best for everybody.
Okay. Is 4:30 too early? The meeting takes about 10 minutes. I brought my children to it in years past. Is 4:30 okay? It'll be very quick, go-to meeting, it's year-end items. Right, we'll stick with 4:30 then. So just a reminder to pencil that in on your calendars, please. I don't think I'll see the majority of you before the Christmas holiday. I want to thank you all so much for your commitment this year. It's been an incredibly trying year, and I have been enthused by your, by your questions and fulfilled by your service to our community, so I thank you very much for that, and I wish you all a very merry Christmas. We need you for continuity of government, so I would encourage you to not be in massive groups of people. So have a wonderful holiday, a safe New Year, and I'll see you, actually, I'll see you before the New Year. So Merry Christmas, everybody, and thank you so much. With that, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Schmidt, I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Wetzel. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? All right, thank you, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.